I want to thank everybody for coming. The purpose of this meeting was called by a coalition of people. One of being SEIU 1021, Black Leadership Forum. And from SEIU 1021, there's a group of people that have started forming and meeting related to what's happened in Ferguson who got together out of anger mostly to decide what it is that we can do and to deal with the issues that are happening in San Francisco, which are similar in nature in the workplace, what's happening to our kids, what's happening with the militarization of police forces, and what we can do as a group and keep growing this group so that we can work together to improve things. And we want participation from everyone. So the format's going to be, there'll be some speakers just to frame the topics of discussion and then discussion following.
My name is Steve Zeltzer. I have a radio show called Work Week on KPFA Radio and also I'm a retired city worker and with United Public Workers for Action. And I think that the rebellion, really, the protests that have taken place around this country against the overt brutality, racism, against Michael Brown, Eric Garner, and others, this has been going on for our lifetimes. This is nothing new. It's the history of the United States, this kind of repression and racism, overt racism, leaving a person on the ground for four hours after they shoot him in front of his family. It's brought a rage in this country among all kinds of people who are not politically active but are angry about what they've seen. And video has changed the situation. In the past, without video cameras, a lot of these things would never be noticed. But now with the video, everyone having a video camera, like with Rodney King, people can see. So what we want to do today is talk about the militarization of the police, but also what are the social conditions that working-class youth particularly face in Hunters Point, in Ferguson, in Oakland, and the kind of oppression that they face. In Ferguson, we'll talk about it a little later, 47% unemployment. And the high schools there have been what they call restructured. They were shut down and they hired Teach for America teachers. They kicked out the most, many black teachers who'd been there for many decades, working there, kicked them out and brought in Teach for America, young teachers, white teachers who had no idea of how to teach in the community, weren't part of the community. And of course, there's been deindustrialization of Ferguson and St. Louis. A lot of auto factories and industrial factories that used to provide jobs for people have been closed down. But this is not unique. In Los Angeles, deindustrialization there too, there used to be many factories. And what you have in replacement of the jobs for people, young people, are prisons and the whole prison industry. This is what's replacing, and the military. So what we're going to be discussing today are what are the economic conditions and what can we do about it? At the end of the meeting, we're going to talk about what programs, what policies that we want to fight for. Because in San Francisco, they're spending money on militarization of police, on armaments from the Defense Department, and they're cutting social services, they're cutting mental health. You look at the jails in this country, and in many instances, that's the only place people can get medical care when they go to jail. And I've interviewed veterans who, on the streets, unemployed veterans, who say, "I have to go to jail to get my injuries taken care of, to get surgery." What kind of country is it that people have to go to jail to get their health care? USA. So those are some of the social issues that we're going to talk about and then develop a plan of action and programs, including against bullying, to say that the city of San Francisco should break off its relationship with the Department of Defense. We're also going to have a report from J.R. Bowery on what's going on here with some of the murders that have gone on in Hunters Point and also the case of Alex Nieto, where he was killed and they're still refusing to release the names of the police officers that were involved in that. They have to go to court to get the names of the police officers, so we'll have a report on that.
Hi, my name is Cedric Jackson. I'm a pre-doc clinical psychologist and I'm also the president of the Black Leadership Forum, that is, the political arm of the black community. I think the question that we're really missing in this whole tragic chain of events is why are the police using lethal force on unarmed suspects? Why do we have a policy in America where policemen can fire with lethal intent on an unarmed suspect? I think that's the major question that we have to think about. We all, I think, should be educated around the environmental, social, psycho factors that make a lot of our low-income and minority communities dysfunctional to the point, whereas in our terms, they are acting outside of the law. We also understand that the economics of this country means that people are out here and there is a shadow economy that is mostly driven by low-income communities, people of color, black and brown people are the ones that really are the ones that are feeding this economy. We also understand that this economy is being manipulated and has been manipulated for decades by our own shadow government to fund their different shadow activities in other countries. We know that poor people don't have the means to have yachts to bring cocaine and marijuana into this country at the levels that we see. We know that poor people don't have the means to bring in the guns and the other instruments of violence that are brought into our communities. We understand that the prison industrial complex is one of the fastest-growing industries in the country. We also understand that America is in a war, an economic war with the rest of the world, and one of the main tools used in it is cost of labor. When you have slave labor, as you do in the prison systems, you are able to fight that battle much more effectively than trying to go up against a populace that's three times your size, that can put out master-level, doctor-level people for the price that we pay for janitors. We have to understand the forces that are impacting our community if we are really to be effective in combating it. We can't go out here and fight tanks with pop guns. So this insurrection, this unarmed insurrection that we see as far as protests are concerned and stuff, is an effort in futility as far as we're concerned. If we're going to beat this, we have to beat this in the same way they're beating this. They're beating this with mind power. They're beating this with covert strategies. We ourselves have to come up with covert strategies. A strategy of just protesting without any real outcome is nothing but a lesson in futility and what it actually has as an impact on our community is cynicism. That way, you are shutting down your ability to bring people back because it's like, yeah, I got out there with this great idea, I protested and everything, and what happened to it? This is not something new. We've been talking about police brutality since the '30s, since the '20s. Rodney King was police brutality. Here was a man where seven officers were beating him with batons because he was drunk and they had no consequence whatsoever. If we are not outraged by the inhumanity that we see perpetrated against black people, how can we possibly be outraged against the inhumanity that is being shown against us? I, as a black person, understand this, but I constantly get people trying to minimize and trivialize my experience by citing their own, which I understand is just a way of getting away from the guilt that they have that they're not doing something about it. So why not sit up and talk about, oh, well, black people aren't the only people who have trouble in this country? That's a trivialization of something that is horrific that's happening in this country. Black people have been alienated and marginalized, and now that the media needs some other things to sensationalize and sell their product, they're showing it? It's like, we need to wake up. The first thing I would want to concentrate on is you have to change policy around this country that a police force cannot use lethal force on an unarmed suspect. If you can't subdue that suspect without lethal force, let him go. Now, if you don't have enough manpower to bring in and subdue one person, you cannot use lethal force on an unarmed suspect. There are too many unarmed suspects in this country. I don't care if they're black, white, or indifferent, who are being killed by armed policemen. That's a ridiculous policy. I thank you very much. I personally have seen nothing but news stories on Ferguson, on New York, on Detroit, on Phoenix. I've seen a tremendous amount of commentary, both conservative and liberal, about this subject. Most of the conservatives are saying, hey, if they just obeyed the law, then they wouldn't have any problem. Most of the liberals are saying, I think, some of the same things that I'm saying. Why is lethal force being used? Why is it so disproportionately black men, young black men that are being killed by the police in this country? I agree that there should be some type of national data collection on this, and I think that for police departments to get funded, federal funds, which I think almost every police department in this country gets some kind of federal funds, that should be a stipulation. But that's something that we as citizens have to say. We as citizens have to say what type of policies these police forces have. They are, in fact, our servants. So that's what we have to do. As citizens, we have to make sure that they are beholding to our wishes and our whims as far as citizens are concerned. And I think that anybody, regardless of what you think the person's worth is or the person's veracity as far as what they were doing, I don't think anybody that has any type of humanitarian spirit whatsoever wants to see somebody murdered, shot down and killed because they're doing something that is against the law. We have a judicial system for that, and policemen are not our judicial system. They are part of our crime enforcement system, which is part of the judicial system. They are not part and parcel of all of our judicial system. No police officer should be a judge and jury and take somebody's life.
They do give discretion. The most discretion in the criminal justice system is the policeman.
Well, you know, one of the things that I heard that I thought was very profound is that you have lawyers that have to go through a doctor program before they become JDs, and they can then take, then they have to have a license. So it doesn't matter what school they go to, everybody has to get licensed. I have to go through an internship and then a licensing procedure that takes almost three years before I can practice. Doctors, lawyers, and professionals and engineers have to go through these types of vetting and these types of screening before they can go out there and they can deal with the public. Police officers sometimes don't even need college degrees. And they can get into jobs, especially in San Francisco, you have captains making $200,000 to $300,000 a year. That's more than doctors and lawyers and a lot of other people make, and they have none of the training requirements that these other professionals have. It's a very tough job that's very easy to get into. That is an issue that we need to address. I don't take anything away from our police officers. I know our police officers have a tremendously stressful job out there, but there are too many of them out there that are not trained to do that job properly. There are too many of them out there that are not trained to understand their own countertransference when they're dealing with a person. Countertransference means, how do I look at you? And too many of them do not, are not connected to the community so that there is no connection. If you send me to Bangalore or something like that and tell me to be a policeman, I might not have the cultural sensitivity to do that properly. You can't bring somebody from Santa Rosa or Catanha or something like that who's never been in this type of diversity and expect them to do that job properly. We need better training, first of all, for a very difficult job, and that's something that we should look at. We not only have to hold the police accountable, we have to hold ourselves accountable because our lack of action is essentially the reason that these things are happening. When we can then hold ourselves accountable and know that we're doing the best that we can do to ensure that there is humanity for another man, for another woman, that we are ensuring that everybody has a right to thrive, a right to be healthy in this country, I think we'll have a better place, not only for ourselves but for everybody else. And I talk about the black community, but when I talk about the black community, the whole world is, to me, is the black community. We're all Africans, and we all need to understand that there is only one race, and that's the human race, and that if we allow one person to be harmed in this way, we're allowing ourselves to be harmed. And most people don't understand that. It's like, well, you can't sit up and complain. You have to complain. You have to protest. This country was born of protest. So why all of a sudden are you now killing your protesters? Why are you killing the very fabric, the very concept that made you the country that you consider yourself to be? We have to keep these types of forums up. We have to incentivize these forums so it's a way that we can ensure that people are finding out. We have roughly 12, 15 people in the audience right now out of a community of 70,000, that's District 10. So we have to go out and make sure that we impact 10 people, each one of us, and then have them impact 10 people. We have to learn how to be more than just social media, we have to learn how to be community media, where we are allowing people to understand the issues that are impacting us, which in turn impact them.
One more question and we'll have to go on to our next speaker. Go on. Can you introduce yourself?
One of the worst things I've encountered throughout this mess is that I get huge, profound fights with conservative fights and just normal white people. They call Trayvon Martin as a, they call Michael Brown as a, oh, they broke the law. Well, you know, Trayvon was a top of zero. No, Zinnoman scolded and followed Trayvon for long distance. But you cannot convince these people who, all of a sudden, the perpetrators become the victims. And no matter what you say, they can't, you can indict the grand jury system for being rigged with a positivist acts as a defense attorney, no matter what you say. That's how profound this problem is. The racism is so endemic. It's like, I don't know where to start.
Well, you know, the thing is, the thing that I also have had this continuing, you know, like dialogue from a lot of conservatives that are getting their information only from Bill Riley and Trayvon, I mean, Michael Brown never had his hands up. He was attacking this man from 15 feet away, and an unarmed suspect was something that he felt he had to bring down. I mean, there's so much misinformation. But if they want the citizens to uphold the law and to abide by the law, then our policemen have to also do that. Our government has to also do that. All of our institutions that are calling for people to abide by the law have to abide by the law themselves. We can't have rogue corporations out here that get no judicial focus whatsoever. We can't have policemen that are corrupt, that are out here using lethal force when it's unnecessary and say that that's law-abiding. What you need to do is you need to call them on their selective enforcement of what law-abiding is.
First of all, as the president of the Officers for Justice, I want to let you know that we are peace officers. We realize that we are servants and we have an honorable duty and a major responsibility to you, the citizens of San Francisco, but not only the citizens of San Francisco, to the state of California and also to the United States, okay? Where we're at right now is a very tense situation, a very sensitive situation, a very volatile situation, because no longer can we really feel that melting pot or that ability to be able to communicate effectively with each other. We're in a situation of racial unrest. There is racism that is going on all over the place, and San Francisco is not excluded from it either. I want to remind the community, first of all, that we have a responsibility, first of all, to maintain our power, because the community, you do have the power. You have the power to determine what type of police officers you want policing in your community. You also have to maintain that engagement. You have to stay engaged with the San Francisco Police Department or whatever police department is serving you in your respective communities. You have to, the thing that the San Francisco Police Department needs to do, and I would encourage you to continually suggest this, demand this, not only from the chief of police but also from the mayor, that police officers consistently receive cultural sensitivity training. A police officer's career is a 30-year career. You know, at some point in time, as we're bringing in new officers, we go through a 30-year career. You know at some point there's some type of post-traumatic stress or some type of incident that occurs that may change the mentality of the police officer that you once knew out on the streets. So I think that maybe some law enforcement agencies need to start looking at, maybe every seven to 10 years, you need to bring that police officer inside and have them maybe meet with someone whom they might be able to speak to about some potential mental health issues or some type of concerns or issues that may be bothering them or maybe putting them on edge. The other thing is, is we need racial harmony, and we need it now. I am incensed with the number of incidents that I see and read about, see and hear about occurring across the United States. And I'm also of the belief now that black young men are the endangered species, and this is a sad state of affairs for us to be in. And as a police officer, I'm not offended when somebody puts their hands up, because to me, as a black woman, a woman of color, hands up means maybe they're telling me, I'm coming in peace, I don't want to do any harm to you. And that's the first thing that comes to my mind. When the NFL players put their hands up, I was not offended by it because they were exercising their freedom of speech. Now, it is not up to the police department to police the NFL, just like it's not up to the NFL to police the police department. That's up to you, the citizens, because you pay our income. Now, there's another thing that citizens need to do. We are hiring police officers nationwide. That means they're not coming from this city necessarily or any of the nine Bay Area counties. Or they say that they can't find anyone and there's no one interested at the level that they need right now to be a police officer. So if they're doing this on a national database search, you, the citizens, need to be involved in the hiring and the decisions as to who's going to be hired to police your city. You have been excluded from that. In the past, you used to be able to sit on a panel with DHR, and it was all constructed by DHR, and we would have at least one citizen on the panel asking a series of questions to potential applicants, those who had passed the written exam. No longer are the citizens of San Francisco involved in that process. So that's one thing you need to also insist upon. The other thing you need to insist upon is that you need to have somebody that's looking out for the best interests of your community. This is the last, Bayview, Hunters Point is the last piece of land where you can still come and find a few more black people than you do anywhere else in the city. And that's sad, but at the same time, we have a responsibility there. And that responsibility is, at one point, you used to have something called the Police Relations...
Community Relations.
...Community Relations Board. And it was a group of people who looked like we look. They were people of color. And their responsibility and what they were there for was to be the eyes and ears of this community. And when and if an issue occurred between a police officer and one of the citizens, a citizen could go, sit down and talk with them, and this board had the responsibility, the respect, the authority to be able to contact the chief of police, the mayor, et cetera. But they were able to get things done. That no longer exists. That needs to come back. We need to have more officers of color policing in the Bayview community. That's lacking. These are some of the things that you can't demand. And in the Central Station, I see a lot of folks who look like the community that they serve working in that district. And these are just some of the things that I see that we can do in order to resolve some of the situations that we're experiencing right now. And also, I just want to put this out on blast, just this last week, if you think it doesn't come full circle back home, my daughter, who has six children living in Roseville, California, was a victim of a hate crime that was prompted by some students, honor students, at a high school in Roseville, California. This day and age, they put cotton on her lawn, and then they said, let's watch the ends pick up the cotton. Gross, upsetting, and it took some time to convince that police department that it was a hate crime. So what I'm saying to you is that we have become so robotic that sometimes we forget about the emotions and the human instincts. And it's time for you, our community, to shake us up, make us wake up and realize that we owe something back to you. We took an oath. We swore that we were going to protect and serve you. There's no reason why any of you should have to fear us. And when I put on my blue uniform, I put it on because I wanted to wear it with pride and I wanted to know and feel that people would come up to me and speak to me and want to be around me, and I would be able to help you resolve problems, not create a problem. And I don't want to go on talking any further. I want to be able to let the audience ask any questions if they have any. And also, another one of our board members, Marion Jackson, one of the original members of the Officers for Justice is here as well.
Are there any questions?
Yes. How can that community be brought back, that relationship between the police and the community that has disappeared? And why do we disappear?
Well, I'm glad to ask how it can be brought back. It can be brought back with you making your phone calls and presenting yourselves at the police commissions meetings on Wednesdays at City Hall. It's on the fourth floor at 5:30 PM. Five PM, excuse me, 5:00 PM. You can present yourselves there. You can demand that you want to see the Police Community Relations Board reestablished again. You can also contact the chief of police and demand and request that this panel be reestablished again to ensure that there is some place, someone, where our community can go and feel that they will be heard and treated with dignity and respect.
What's happened in the last few months about Michael Brown and Eric, whatever? What, I mean, your police department, are they discussing this? Like, I always feel like if you see what's happening in a small police department and you say, well, I don't want this, I want the chief. The chief is saying, I don't want this to happen in my place. Why wouldn't that spread all over? I mean, the whole thing with Michael Brown and everything, didn't the police departments look at this and say, Jesus, we do not want this to happen, but yet it continues to happen anyway? Is San Francisco discussing this among yourselves or among any meetings? I mean, this is really a nation tragedy and it needs, you all to speak up about it. I mean, we need policemen to come out and say, we don't like what our brothers and sisters are doing. And that blue line is so tight that, you know, I have a nephew who's a policeman, they don't step over that. They don't step over that.
Yes, it's a very thin blue line. There are discussions that are occurring. I know factually that they are occurring amongst the men and women in blue at district stations. And we all have our varying opinions. However, the thing that I attempt to do, so that we take the color out of the situation, is don't even discuss what the race, ethnicity, or gender, or anything is of the person. Just say, "X, Y, Z happened, and a cop did X, Y, Z, and then this was the final outcome. What do you think?" I think when we take out the color, then we can be a little bit more rational in our thought process. However, as far as what SFPD is doing, I think that through our training and our onboard training and whatnot, we fortunately have not been put in this type of situation that these other agencies have consistently been confronted with. However, we can always do better. And this is why I say it is imperative that we continue to have cultural sensitivity training. It needs to be ongoing. We need to have roll call training that involves these type of things. We need to do this in order to ensure that when we go out and we police our communities, we know emphatically what it is we need to do, what it is we want to do, and we replay all of the dynamics before we take our action. And I think that fortunately, to a certain extent, I think that we're doing that a little bit better than some of the agencies, but of course, we can do better. And that is what the hopes are of other police associations like the Officers for Justice. It's our hope that our brothers and sisters in blue will learn from the mistakes of others and perfect what we do even better.
One question. How do you get around when incidents happen? Or if I'm a citizen and I see something that a cop does that I don't think is right, even though that individual that it was done to might not want to do anything about it, but, you know, an observer wants to do something about it? How do you get around the fact that, you know, generally what happens, and the perception is that POA is going to defend the cops no matter what, and that a lot of things get dismissed? Because, you know, and I'm labor, right? So POA is labor. So there's a conflict that sometimes the perception is that POAs, they're protecting the people that they should be trying to help get rid of out of their properties.
Well, that's why you have the Office of Citizens complaint, but of course, I've heard some people say that there's some concerns about that. And this is why I revert back to what my counterpart and my member of OFJ has indicated, which is that we need that Community Police Relations Board. Because again, that was another arm that you could reach out to if you didn't feel comfortable, say, going to OCC, or going to Internal Affairs, or if you didn't feel comfortable just coming to the Officers for Justice. Because our office is right there, 5126 Third Street, where they're Monday through Fridays, usually 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We are also another entity for you to come to if you need some direction, some type of guidance as to how you get out of or a situation that you might find yourself in.
Biographer Steve gave my professional background and the fact that I've been a union member for many, many years. I'm also affiliated with the United Public Workers for Action. Just a few personal, closer personal notes. I was born in Mississippi, in Jim Crow Mississippi, back in 1944. It was like 1844 sometimes. And I spent the first seven years of my life there. And one day, I asked my mother and father why we had to sit in the back of the bus. And my parents picked me and my two sisters up, and we moved to Los Angeles in the early 50s. And so I grew up in Los Angeles in the 50s and 60s, and I saw LA evolve from segregated communities like Central Avenue and segments of Watts, as well as redlining being the operative housing policy, to 1965, where we saw the beginnings of open housing, as well as the urban rebellions. In fact, I lived in the curfew area during the Watts Rebellion, and I have very, very clear memories. And ironically, that development actually led to my teaching career, kind of in a direct path, because I was beginning to take classes in education, in graduate work, working on a credential. And a lot of students came to me and asked me if I would be on panels. This is 1965, '66, on panels in their various classes, dealing with quote-unquote "race relations." And it was there that I learned that I can do a pretty good job in the classroom. So all of this is very, very intimate with me. I'd like to present more of an academic and maybe historical perspective. And the topic, or the theme I'd like to comment on is the meaning of Ferguson. I don't think I have to define Ferguson. In fact, Ferguson needs to be defined, but I think as historical processes occur, we'll have a better understanding of how to define it. But at this point, it's known as Ferguson. The two general things I'd like to say, one is to comment on the nature of the protests, what the anger is about, and how that fits structurally into the American political economy. And the second thing I'd like to comment on are the, what I think are some of the implications about Ferguson in an ongoing basis. Hopefully, some of the implications that I mentioned will stand the test of time. Certainly, the focus, the immediate focus is the death of Michael Brown, and how his body was treated. And then the response by the government officials in Missouri, and for that matter, the United States government, by the militarized presence that took place in Ferguson. And then, in a more recent area, the non-indictment of the police officer who killed Eric Garner are the immediate things that have caused the anger. But I think there's a structural package here, if you will, that I more or less link or define as the coercive arm of the state. And what I want to propose is that the nature of police or policing today, the form of it is different than it was before 1968. Now, keep in mind, the role of the police historically has been the same, and that's basically to protect the status quo. As Mr. Jackson said earlier, there was a moment when communities policed themselves, but when we see the rise of industrialization in the late 19th century, we begin to see the more organizational, state-defined police structures. Prior to 1968, policing was different. The nature of policing and the criminal justice system was different in its form. Certainly, the majority of black people throughout most of the first half of the 20th century lived in the South. And I think we have a pretty clear picture of how that policing took place. Jim Crow and white vigilantes were, I mean, were the form that that took. Starting in '68, we see the, I think, the structure of the current coercive arm of the state. The characteristics of that, I think we're all familiar with, but I want to list them. Racial profiling, harassment and brutality, police murder with impunity, a racialized criminal justice system, draconian sentencing laws that are racially defined, what Glenn Ford at Black Agenda calls "the black mass incarceration state." And I was listening to him on radio the other day, and he reminded me of a point that I think is very important. If you, we have probably 10 times more people in prison today than we had in 1965. And what's very, very important, 70% of the prisoners in 1965 in jail were white, and about 10% were black, 10% Latino, and then others. By 1975, that ratio had been changed 100%. So there has to be something on the ground, structurally, related to politics and economics that is changing that reality. What I propose, and we won't go into this in detail, obviously, we don't have the time, but the research material is out there, and it's pretty easy to find. I can refer to a few items that I think are important later. Certainly, what we see, this new form of the coercive arm was initially in response to urban rebellions of the 1960s. We see Lyndon Johnson signing several pieces of legislation in 1968. Perhaps the most significant was this omnibus crime bill, which was labeled "safe streets" law, or something. And out of that came an agency or an administration called the Law Enforcement Assistance Agency, which was designed to transfer, using federal funds, military equipment to local police agencies, et cetera, et cetera. And we can go through a whole structure of legislation at the federal level that has facilitated that. The Pentagon's 1033 program is perhaps the one that's mentioned the most. And as Obama, last Monday, met with African-American activists centering around quote-unquote "Ferguson," at the same time, he's talking about adding some reforms, body cameras, et cetera, et cetera. He's at the same time endorsing the militarized, the expansion of the militarization of the police. His solution is transparency. Now, what underscored all of this structurally? Well, I think what occurred was a shift from an industrial-based economy that had been formed starting back in the 1870s, 1880s, and that were very, very important to profit for capitalists up until the early 70s. Steve earlier mentioned the deindustrialization of Los Angeles. Well, I saw it right around me when I grew up. A lot of kids that graduated from high school that were white, black, or Latino in the community I grew up in, if they didn't want to go to college, they can go over to Southgate and get a job at General Motors. You can go up on Manchester and get a job at Firestone Rubber or Goodyear Rubber. And you could make a salary that would, you could buy a house, buy a car, buy a TV and a refrigerator, okay, and raise a family. So by the mid-'70s, that didn't exist anymore. All of these factories had been dismantled, had been shipped to either non-union areas of the United States, or to Mexico, Argentina, South Africa, et cetera. And now we know that these factories are in China, Bangladesh, Vietnam, et cetera, et cetera. And as was mentioned earlier, much of it is about labor costs, to say the least. Also, what occurred was not only a restructuring of the economy, but also an ideological redefinition based on what we call neoliberalism, which is kind of the framework for public policy to facilitate the restructuring of the economy, cutting taxes for the wealthy. We had a great public school system in the 50s and early 60s. I went to Washington High School in Los Angeles. I mean, you know, it was an awesome school. But we have to remember, the top 1% paid 91% of their income in taxes during that period. Now, they don't pay anything at most. What did Romney pay, about 14% of his income? And he was trying to whittle that down as quickly as he could. What we see is the privatization of public services occurring. I noticed that one day, when, on one day, this, one week, the city picked up the garbage and paid the salary of the garbage pickup guys, and that was funded through property taxes. And the next day, it was a private company. And we, there was a bill in my mailbox that I had to send, you know, 50 bucks, or 20 bucks, or whatever it was, back in the 70s. And we're going through that now. Later, we're going to have a panel on privatization, and I'm going to speak on how that has impacted education as well. Deregulation of the economy. And keep in mind, this is a bipartisan project. Republicans and Democrats have been involved in it. Starting with Carter, believe it or not. I did my PhD dissertation on Carter, and I can back that up very, very strongly. This neoliberalism is also calling for busting unions, et cetera, et cetera. So we've had this framework. Recently, they destroyed private sector unions. Now, only about 7% of private sector workers are unionized. And 10 years ago or so, they began going after public sector workers by demonizing teachers and charter schools and all this kind of stuff. Now, related to the African-American community, and this was through public policy, affirmative action, housing policies, et cetera, we see approximately 1/3, and these are just ballpark estimates, 1/3 of the African community were allowed to get access to education, become professionals, et cetera, et cetera, basically to be a buffer between the state and the majority of African-Americans who were in precarious working-class jobs and also part of the underclass. And obviously, there was a great downward mobility reality there. And so what we see is now the fostering of quote-unquote "the ghetto" in a new form. And I always argued that the radical youth of the 60s, during, some of us were bought off into the system, but many potential radicalized youth were now being forced into gangs and criminalized and demonized owing to the system pumping drugs into the community, et cetera, et cetera. And then comes Nixon and Law &amp; Order, and the silent majority, and et cetera, et cetera. And we are where we are today. And 44 years later or so, finally, people are pissed off, okay? And I think Ferguson fundamentally represents young people in particular saying, "We aren't going to buy into this stuff anymore," okay? So that's a very sketchy outline, I think, of where we've come, why we've come to where we are today. Now, I'd like to make four points related to what I think are the implications of Ferguson. First area has to do with a theoretical perspective. I'm not going to go into details here, but any point I make could be elaborated for possibly hours. There are three things. One, we see the media, the dominant system, trying to say, "This is a racial problem." Well, damn tootin', it is a racial problem, but it's also a class problem as well. And it's also a gender problem as well. And we cannot separate those three realities, okay? Because we live in a class-based system that is capitalist and uses race, uses gender, to divide people. You're talking, lady in the back, you're talking about some of your contemporaries and friends. They're being manipulated intentionally by the ruling class through its media and all this kind of stuff. They're being brainwashed. They're experts on football. They can sit down and be very analytical about the 49ers quarterback, okay? But when it comes to more important issues, you know, they're blinded by all of this stuff. And on one level, it's not their fault. I taught white kids at Chico State for 34 years. One of my proudest moments is when that freshman white kid was in my Introduction to Government class. In about the sixth or seventh week, he'd start hyperventilating and jumping up and yelling at me, "You're brainwashing me! You're brainwashing me!" And two years later, when he's a junior, in my elective, the first day of my elective class, I'm calling roll, and I see that guy in the back of this class. And he always waits till everybody's gone, and he ends up walking behind me. And I look over at him, and I says, "How come you're here?" And he said, "It took me two years, but I finally figured it out." So it's not race, it's not white people per se, it's consciousness. Now, there's, one of our previous speakers is a psychiatrist, so he understands these things much deeper than I do. But on a superficial level, that's how I see it. Secondly, one of the exciting things- Secondly, one of the exciting things for me is the revival of the theoretical model based on, that was kind of concocted in the sixties by people like Carl Boggs and others, about the black community was a colony. We were a domestic or an internal colony, living within the mother country, where the traditional framework of colonialism was England and then Africa or Asia. I think this is being revived now, because people are beginning to realize these communities are occupied, okay? And the police in general view themselves as the occupier, and that the people in the communities are the enemy, okay? So, this metaphor is coming back, and we're seeing it in its full fruition. I think the third thing, and this is the one I appreciate the most, is finally, finally, this myth, this BS that we live in a post-racial society is being kicked out the door, okay? But we have to remember what Obama's role was in the first place. They wanted to put a colored face there to show the world that America is tolerant. And it was also a buffer to prevent the anger that blacks and Latinos and white liberals and progressives felt about Bush. And if McCain had gotten elected, that anger would have continued, okay? So, you had to put a buffer in there to slow that down. It took six years for people to finally figure it out, but luckily, we're figuring it out. These are my views, okay? They're my personal views. Politically, real quickly, and each one can be gone through in great detail. First of all, I understand the reforms, and I think all these reforms are very important. If it saves one life, it's important. But what I want us to understand is the political system, the ruling class and its political establishment are not gonna change the current accumulation model that gives them enormous profit. And therefore, the social-economic conditions are gonna continue unless we have an effective challenge to that. And so, we have to remember that. I have an agenda, UPWA has an agenda, is what we think could be an alternative. Secondly, recent developments, and I want to include the midterm election results as part of this analysis, meaning large numbers of blacks, Latinos did not vote for, did not go out to vote last November, which indicated, you know, beginnings of a delegitimization of Obama, the Democrats, and possibly the political system. So, what we can say is that an increasing number of people do not consider the political system legitimate, and that the political establishment is legitimate. Ferguson symbolizes, if not the answer, at least the questioning of the legitimacy of the police, and certainly, the criminal justice system indicated by the results of the grand juries dealing with Michael Brown's murder and Mr. Garner's murder. But it also is an indictment of Obama, as he talks consistently, talks out of both sides of his mouth, and does just the opposite. It's also discrediting of the Democratic Party. And I want to add, what is important here, it's also discrediting the, what Glenn Ford calls "the Miss Black Leadership Class." And that's Jesse, and Al, and the whole gang, Eric, et cetera, who are working their tail off trying to channel this back into the Democratic Party and into the electoral process. But I don't think the grassroots are gonna buy into that, okay, anymore? Because that leadership is trying to channel this anger and frustration and rebellion back into the very system that has created the problem. And that is a conundrum. Well, what is that conundrum? One third point is that the ruling class is facing a severe crisis, okay? I don't know what's gonna happen with Ferguson, okay? They found a way to smash Occupy very, very quickly. They're working their tail off to try to contain Ferguson. But regardless, Ferguson has scared the shit out of the ruling class, okay? Pardon my French, okay? And they're in a conundrum at this point. And I think there are two general areas. Domestically, using Ferguson, for example, if they continue to use their militarization to repress these protests, that only furthers the discrediting and delegitimation of the Democratic Party, Obama, and the system as a whole. At the same time, it's not prepared to make the kind of structural, ideological, political changes that are necessary to restructure the society, to deal with the social ills, housing, jobs, et cetera, et cetera, that need to be dealt with, okay? So, they're really in an enormous conundrum at this point in time. And what, I think the second point, and each one of these points, again, can be expanded tremendously, what this also, on a global level, this is what is fascinating. Keep in mind, the United States has been running around for, since nine eleven and even before that, claiming to ram democracy down the throats of Third World countries, and now they're trying to overthrow the Putin regime and Russia, threatening possibility of World War III in doing that. And what Ferguson is exposing is the realities of the American political economy and the institutionalized racism of that system. All you have to do is go on the internet, it's there, and read the international press as to what it's saying. My favorite line is coming out of Russia, obviously, the Russian media would use this term, they're calling Ferguson "the Afro-Maidan," okay? The Afro-Maidan. Maidan related to the protests in Kiev, which was US and EU orchestrated. And they're making an analogy between this is the rebellion or the possible revolution in the United States. So, this is further discrediting the US foreign policy as the world is trying to shift away from a unipolar world dominated to the United States to a multipolar world.
They're obviously doing it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Now, the final point I want to make is related to what is Ferguson? Is it a movement? Is it a social movement? I don't have all the evidence in front of me. Clearly, what we see are embryonic forms of organization, but most of the responses are spontaneous reactive activities, which is pretty typical of the left, to say the least, over the fifty-some years I've been involved in left-wing activities. A social movement generally has organization, it has clear objectives, it has a program, it has clear strategies that can be redefined depending on circumstances, it has tactics, and it has coordination and communication. I don't think Ferguson has all of that yet, and it's, but certainly, it's moving in that direction. But what I want to add, what I want to say, and I don't want to give an obituary to Ferguson, because I am truly inspired by it. In fact, what I want to say, and I'm taking a little more time than I should, studying history, American history, and teaching American history, and with an emphasis on African-Americans, it seems to me that there have been five openings in American history where quantitative or significant change has occurred for some African-Americans. The American Revolution, the northern colonies began emancipation of their slaves in the eighteen seventies, et cetera, et cetera. The Civil War, obviously, the official end of slavery. World War I, the northern migrations, creating a permanent African-American community in the north. World War II through the sixties. You could argue, World War II is separate, and the sixties are separate, but I see that as part of a single unit. And what I want to, what I want to believe is that Ferguson may represent the next opening for significant change. But this change has to be qualitative change, because quantitative changes, I've just argued, is not gonna be sufficient to deal with the crisis that not only the United States faces, but the global economy faces. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a satellite dish at the time, and I was watching local LA television news coverage, and I felt like I was there. And I was on the phone with my family and members every day, every, all day long, sometimes.
People got killed.
Right.
And I saw the San Francisco version of it, and it was hell scary, which is nothing compared to that. Like, don't you think that the restraint showed by these Miami, Phoenix, wherever, Chicago, New York, Washington, San Francisco, Oakland, the restraint that the demonstrators exhibited is amazing?
Yeah, you know, I agree a thousand percent. But what I want to add to that is what, how I interpret that is they're not afraid. And when forced, when revolutionary forces or radical forces, progressive forces are not afraid of the state apparatus, that is part of the delegitimization process. And that is what also increases the fear and the stress within the existing system. All we have to do is look back over the last forty years at how mass urban revolts have overthrown governments. We can go to Iran in nineteen seventy-nine, you know, we can look at some of the events in the nineties and eighties, many of them orchestrated by the United States, by the way. But all of these crises, the systems collapse when they become completely delegitimized, okay? And that they can no longer use the instruments that maintain social control without further discrediting themselves. So, I'm not saying we're at that point, at this stage, but that's kind of the model I'm using to observe what's happening, okay? So, yes, this restraint, I think, is not fear, it is a lack of fear, which is very, very, very important. Bottom line, we live in a capitalist system. And what capitalism is about is profit, okay? And the theme that I, underscoring what I talked about earlier related to the changed nature of the policing system and the coercive arm, is that from the eighteen eighties to, say, the nineteen seventy, how did the rich make most of their profit? Through production, industry, okay? We see in the sixties a falling rate of profit, and corporations began to make decisions about shifting their production overseas so they could make lower, make more profit because of lower wage bills. Now, what, you can call that model of production, an accumulation model, how is capital, how is profit accumulated? There are other sidebar elements, to some degree, military spending from the war, World War II, up through the seventies, obviously. From the seventies on, the accumulation model has been redefined. It is profits from overseas, yes, but it's also profits from bailouts, tax cuts, privatizing the public services, more military spending, et cetera, et cetera. And so, military spending, this money for ISIS, it goes to McDonnell Douglas, it goes to, it goes to the banks, it go, you know, it's not about war. They talk about, "Well, we lost in Afghanistan, and we lost in Iraq." The arms industries, they didn't lose anything. They want the wars to continue. They're making tons of money, okay? So, we have to remember, at the core of this is capitalism, okay? My solution is socialism, okay? How do we get there? Maybe Ferguson is a vehicle, who knows?
I'm in Castaneda, work for San Francisco General Hospital. I'm a health professional, also, I'm a priest of the Catholic Church. I have two parishes, one in Richmond, it's called the Holy Family, La Sagrada Familia, and Jesús el Buen Pastor, Jesus the Good Shepherd, here in San Francisco. I have four nuns working with me, and we provide meals for the homeless on Sixteenth Street every Thursday. And we do our outreach, not to spell, not only to say the good news, but also to tell anyone that he's my brother, and he deserves to be loved, fed, and taken care of. So, as you see, the majority of those homeless people on Sixteenth Street are also patients of the hospital. Some of them are very high users of the emergency department. Majority of them live on the street, on the alleys around Julian Street and the surrounding Sixteenth Street. This is a very complex problem. Why is it complex? Because we have housing problem in the Mission District, which was the Spanish called El Barrio, which is no longer Latino. They have been evicted, they pay them five thousand dollars per person, that's the law, and a family ends up leaving, believe it or not, in their car. Why? Because the new rent is equal to their salary, so they will have no money left for food. So, they either leave San Francisco, and they move to different areas like Richmond, Oakland, et cetera, and becomes a big burden because they have to pay transportation. So, they're going to what we call poverty level. Others, the teenagers, childrens are so upset of the injustice of being a victim, mistreated, they want to fight back to that injustice with another injustice, which is called gangs, they will join gangs to survive and to help their family. So, as you can see, the problem is even more complex than you think, because a lot of people that are sick and they're mentally ill, San Francisco General Hospital has closed the psychiatric ward. Therefore, we have many people who need help, mental problems, and that leads to other problems, that leads to be abused by others, or some of them, they are bipolar, they become violent, so they end up beat up, or they end up sometimes in jail. And the other thing is that, once they get out of the hospital, the ones that are sick, they have no place to go. I remember a case, one of the persons that, we call him regular, always there, and he had a heart surgery, open-heart surgery, so he was homeless, so they gave him a voucher for three days at this place, and after those three days, he's back on the street. What kind of care he can have on the street? So, I, for a long time, I was looking, "Who is accountable for all this?" Until one day, I saw myself in the mirror, and I said, "You are accountable for all this." That's how I began the program on Thursday feeding. We don't get any money from any sources, we use our own fundings. It's not like, we don't have administration's expenses, so it's not much, one dinner a night, but at least they get hot food, and the best of all, they get company, and they know that somebody cares. Because it's a bar station, and five o'clock, I should know, people are coming from jobs and all that, and I should, I should know that our mission has evolved to another different type of neighborhood, so all these are high-paying jobs, people who lives there. And they look all this, and boy, I never seen people walk so fast like in that corner. They walk so fast because they don't want to see the one that's laying there. They walk so fast because they don't want to see the one that's laying there, the one that hasn't had a shower for God knows how long. And, uh, we provide them with clothes because we understand that these people, it's not like they're gonna backpack their clothes and they're gonna go to the laundry and clean their clothes now when there's, when they can't get, uh, uh, fresh clothes. They just get rid of the old one, turn to the garbage and put it on. That's it. They have no place to take a shower. So, um, we become a society that we let somebody else take care of the problem. And the other reasoning that we use is like, it's not my fault that he's, uh, an alcoholic or prostitute and that's his problem, you know? Why he doesn't get a job? Why this? Why that? So, uh, we easily spend millions of dollars to make San Francisco beautiful, Palm Street and all that, but we can't spend millions of dollars to get the homeless out of being homeless, to train them for a new job, to give them medical care. They think that by opening a few methadone clinic, they're helping. It takes more than a methadone clinic to help, you know? It takes courage. It takes hope. Hope as a human being to restore the human dignity. We're not talking about color. We're not talking about race. We're talking about human being and they have their dignity. And we step on that dignity by telling them, you are worthless. Why we should spend money on, on you? You're a menace to the society. Which society am I talking to? Because that part of the society, they are society.
Right.
It's us that we have been, uh, very nasty toward them. So, the, the rent is going so much out of con- out of control, so suspenseful that I begin to think these people are not properly trained in a new job. What kind of job they can do? What kind of housing they can't afford? My God, I mean, we have a big problem here that while, while we talking about developing buildings in the Mission, uh, for five hundred units, but each unit is gonna cost you at least a million dollar. So, and the response of the ambulance is incredible slow. If it's some, if it, if there's two call, one of them is for, uh, either the Twenty Fourth Street or Sixteenth Street and the other one is someplace else, and there's one ambulance, who do you think they're gonna go and serve first? You guess right. Sixteen would be less for later on or Twenty Fourth Street. We spent thousands of dollars in each visit of the, uh, one of these homeless people to the ER when we can't spend very little money. If we have nurses going there checking their blood sugar. Excuse me. Sometimes the problem is the sugar so low. A quick, easy test can save thousands of dollars. An orange juice, a crackers.
Can't even, yeah.
Can't even buy. But no, person will go unconscious, will call nine one one, and it comes a, a big bill afterward. So, but we really, really have not paid attention. Why? It's because the same, uh, reason why those panel have disappear of the community, between the community and the police officer. Because we have become with callous in our conscience. We have developed callous. Okay? I think, uh, when all this case about Ferguson and many other Fergenses that are not so-called Ferguson, I think that all those people who say, well, if they, if they kept the law or this and that, I wonder if he, they think that could be my child.
That's all you have to do is think.
That could be my child. You know, on Sixteenth Street, when I see all those people there, they weren't born that way. They weren't born that way. They progressively became like that for many reasons that, this is not the time to discuss the reasons, but they weren't born there. They, they had a father and a mother. Well, now they invetro, but others don't such invetro, but let's assume for a moment, you know? And they were loved by someone at some point. Just person, the love cease, stop there. And why there are some, they conquer so much there because they want some human heat. That's why when you walk in there, it's a little community. There's a hundred people there at one point. And they all have, they parked their car, they got their backpack, they'll be talking, they'll be listening to music because they want some human interactions. And because nobody from the street will stop and talk to them because they're afraid they might ask them for a dollar or they might be jumped. And they see them like, like a contagious disease that if I touch him, I'm, I might get infected. So when we go there and serve that plate of half food, we tell them that there's somebody that care about them, that there's someone that wants them to have a better life. We cannot say, it's the city problem, I pay taxes. No, it's also my problem because I have not forced the city to see that problem. I have not forced the city to see those person as they are, humans person. We all make mistake. We all have a skeleton in the closet. Why they cannot have another chance? If I can, they surely can. If I have the right to have hope, they have the right to have hope. It's not that by my strength, I am what I am. No. No. So I make a call, I make an appeal to all of each of you. Whenever you see one of them, just give them a hug. Doesn't matter how bad they smell, just still a human being.
I don't smell very good.
That's right. Because, because with that, that show them more than giving him a dollar. Because you give them a dollar to get rid of them so they won't be bugging you, walking after you for, after a block or two, but with a hug, they'll be touched. They'll be touched. They'll know that people care. Thank you, my friends.
My experience of society at this point in time, specifically with the workplace. I am a city and county employee. I have been there twenty years and I have a master's. I've been in IT for over thirty years. So I bring, um, just a little bit to my position. I am not the greatest. I am not the worst. I am a professional and I've always maintained that. I have never been written up. I have, uh, definitely made mistakes and been called on it and corrected it. I, um, don't get a lot of guidance. I'm, uh, again, not just a professional, but I'm a grown woman and a bit independence in my, uh, uh, my area of expertise. And so there's not a lot of babysitting as far as what time did you get in? What time did you leave? What meeting did you go to? What user did you go to their office to seek? It's been flexible with the trust that you do your job, nobody's complaining, your user community is happy, you get emails here and there about what a good job I did, and we go on from there. What, what's interesting is I made twenty years recently, um, in March and was very happy about it. And still a little too young at my age of fifty-eight to retire, but as an analyst, I am very interested in understanding what are my options? I, um, don't have quite the passion I have had in the past on IT. But, um, you know, it's my, it, it, it's been unfortunately more of a job than a career where, uh, maybe the past years in the beginning at, at City and County and of course at Fireman's Fund prior, I thought it to be a career. So I felt very blessed to get into that industry and, um, I have no complaints. I, I've been blessed. And so when, uh, things start changing where a peer, uh, gets promoted over me, where in addition, where we used to go to coffee together, I went to his, uh, his luncheon to celebrate his, his marriage with his partner, uh, things like that. And not to say friendship takes over a- at your work. The most important things are at work, even if you do gain friendships, it's the work. That's what I go there for. And in addition, I go there for the salary. You know, we all need to eat and, and, and whatnot. You know, keep the roof on, on one's head. So anyway, I've not only been looked over for, uh, a promotion, I have, um, interesting facts that people don't even apologize for mistakes they make. If you've overlooked me because of what I look like, admit it, uh, and correct it. And maybe not even admit it to me. There, the arrogance continues. The, the major thing I'm finding is that cultural competency is non-existent. And what's even more shocking at my age and a native San Franciscan is that racism is very alive and well in San Francisco and at City and County of San Francisco. Now you can call it any kind of name you want to, but unfair, disparate treatment is alive and well. And so I've been bullied in my office. I've been told that if I'm training a coworker of mine, because I'm thinking about my department to say, my God, I might be retiring in the next ten years or so, let me train someone on my skills and what my duties and area of, of responsibility. And I got deemed that it's a wasted resource. Why are both of us going offsite to a user, uh, to help their, their, um, problem as I'm training? And, um, and then I was called into, uh, I was scheduled a meeting with my director, with my manager, and with my supervisor. And I thought, hmm, is that not a waste of resource? It takes three of you to tell me, to give me an assignment? I had a prior experience, maybe six months prior, where I had, um, gone to, my manager had called me into the office and, uh, he gave me an assignment. So, and I'm supposed to get turnover. Fine. Then a little later, within fifteen minutes, he says, oh, our director wants to talk to me. Okay. I go into the office and now it's my manager and my director. And she not only repeats exactly what he said, pretty much, on the assignment, and I'm thinking, okay, this isn't quite new information. Hmm, you know, okay, thank you. She also adds that the recipients of the department, or, or, I'm sorry, the user community that I'm being assigned this project are not happy that I'm the one assigned to this, assign, this project. And all I thought was, gee, I wonder why she feels the need to tell me this? And so six months later, fast forward, six months later, as an analyst, I'm thinking, hmm, the last time I was in this woman's office to get a new assignment, to me it was disciplinary. It was rude and I wasn't even prepared to invoke my wine garden rights. So the second time around with the simplicity of, we want to give you a new assignment, my analytical skills were working and I said, well, I want my union representation there. Well, they subsequently canceled the meeting. They could have said no. They could have told me it was not disciplinary, but they canceled the meeting. Next day I'm at my desk and, uh, my director and my supervisor corner me in my office and I find out my manager probably was not there because he was off that day. And so here the meeting with those three were canceled the day before when I invoked my wine garden rights. But the next day, two of the three corner me in my office with the first thought of, uh, the first phrase was, uh, something to the effect of, I don't feel comfortable signing your timesheet if I don't know what you're doing. And all I'm thinking is, first of all, since when is my director concerned about signing a timesheet? Secondly, shouldn't you be talking to my supervisor and manager if you at your level don't know what little old Joe is doing? My goodness, what was that about? And so I was so traumatized as, as much as I like to think I'm a very strong person, that I, I couldn't cope with the, the hatred, the venom, the energy that exuded, that I'm sitting there frozen. I have this wine garden rights on my wall. I couldn't even focus to read that right then and say, timeout, you can't do this, stop, stop attacking me. And I realized as people were in shock first, you know, it's like the Kubler Ross steps on death and dying. You know, the shock, the denial. It's unbelievable, the onslaught of, in a professional, you know, environment, as you like to think, I'm at work. I'm sitting at my computer, working. And to have this onslaught of hatred put upon me in my office by two people, in frigging credible. And so here we are, um, in the twenty-first century and the only change that has not changed is racism. And the unveiling of it, in, in fact, I, uh, that's a story, that's not true. The change of racism has gotten just a little bit more insidious and clever. But I am here to tell you, when we talk about bullying, the, the things they do that, that we subject ourselves to. And, and in that experience, I told you, on its, on its own, it's like, okay, in twenty years, fine, somebody corners you in your office, yeah, it doesn't sound good. I understand how fear, you know, how intimidating that must have been. What about it? But I want you to realize, in the twenty years, that is not the first time. I've been called the B word by, um, one person with a group of three who laughed about it. And it was at the end of the day. This happened in nineteen ninety-nine. They handled it a certain way that I realize now was not the proper way to do it. And subsequently, one of these people are my managers. So it's like, wow, you do something like that, you get a prize. You know, I've been targeted through the years. What is Joe working on? I want her to document these things. And I would answer the questions. You know, my manager would be instructed by my director, who, who is the one that cornered me at my office. And, um, you know, would have her on the email, say, no, Joe, we need to know about blah, 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 you know, please, please explain that. And I said, sure. Is everybody being asked the same question? I'd get no response. The things that they've done over the years, you know, I, I realize you do the best you can at the time with the information you have at that moment. And so it's all led me to this point of saying enough. I have now got to stand up. I can't turn the other cheek. I maintain my professionalism. I was out of the office for a while taking care of my son and I was very stressed behind this. I, you know, I start blaming myself. What did I do? I would tell people about it and they're telling me, what did you do? I mean, it's the programming that we have of cultural competency, competency that as a black person... that as a black person, I'm down on myself, knocking myself, as if I don't have value. And so, it all lends to where we are in this society. We, as I say, drink the same Kool-Aid. And so, if I'm at work, and I have rights, I really have rights, but I'm the only one who doesn't know I have rights. Because I've been led to think I don't have rights, and that I don't have value, and you better do what I say, or I'll be fired, and God knows, I need my job. Or, because you're not worthy. And I'm starting to believe the same stuff that I see on TV and the way society's been showing me. I look now at my level, at my job. And I go back to my elementary school days, where I recently was looking at my report cards, and I thought, wow, why was this a B? I was one of the top students in the eight years before high school, and didn't really pay attention. You know, I'd get my report cards with the, you know, my senior distributing them. I knew I was always one of the top ones in the class. I remember the spelling bees and some math challenges with the, you know, top guy and the girl. And it would always be a draw when it ended up being me. It was always a draw. They would just kind of stop it. It's like, oh, God, you know, they're not going to let me win. And so, I understand now, even then, I was being predisposed to a certain thing of, don't strive too hard, don't try too much. Even though you're good, and you're even teacher's pet, at least I thought I was. And I just recently looked at my report cards, Bs, B pluses, some A minuses, and it was a lie. I was an A plus student in elementary school. I was really a very good student, but this is what I've been subjected to, this little insidious, subliminal, don't do that. And so, needless to say, when I look at directorships, or manager ones and twos, or deputy directors, why am I not applying to these things? Why am I not striving to these things? Where is my fear? Why is my fear? And the fact that I admit, there's fear, oh, no, I can't do that. And I looked at my, my manager before she retired, black woman, and, and when it was time to get to the new director, because she was retiring. I asked her, hey, why don't you apply? Oh, no, I'm gonna be retiring soon. It's like, so what? And she was my mirror. At the time, I didn't even realize, hey, I'm asking her, why doesn't she apply? Why don't I apply? And so, then, of course, the little voice, oh, Joe, you know, they have you in this box. They're not going to do that. And I will tell others, I forget to tell myself, let them tell you no then. Go for it, let them tell you no. So, here I am, in, again, the twenty-first century, two thousand fourteen, twenty years plus. In March, I'm closer to it being twenty-one years than twenty. And I'm still subjected to where I've had to go through all of these different agencies, where they've even, one of the agencies has even said, well, we don't agree to hostile work environment, and we don't agree to racism, but we do agree to despair treatment. Oh, my goodness, aren't they all related? But I haven't counted as a blessing. And so, right now, there's an investigation underway with that. And so, now they're telling me, I have to come up with my side of the, the coin of who I am and what I bring to the table. And so, I drive them crazy, because as an analyst, I'm pretty darn good. And I had to ask them in the agency that's investigating this. I said, okay, you're asking me to prove why I think I deserve this, but where's the information that they even considered me at all? Where's the information they have on me? Where's the information that they objectively chose the three potential candidates that are at the level, that are, are from the evil playing field? Where is that, that they looked at all of us? And then came with the decision, don't just prove to me why they came, came up to the one that they picked? I got no answer at this point. Here's one more thing I have to share with you about City and County of San Francisco. You gotta love them. We have to take a harassment class every year. What's so interesting about it is, we go and take it, and we have these online, and they're online PowerPoints and, and whatnot. And it, you know, it's kind of automated. We don't, you know, we're not in a classroom. And most of the time when you take these classes, all you want to do is get to the end. Yeah, okay, check, I did it, it's a requirement, let me move on with my life. Well, this one particular year, I thought, okay, it's not working. I, maybe I'm tired today, and I want to get through with this. But this past year, I was going through the slides, and I was thinking, wow, this is really weird. Where they have examples of bad supervisors, they look like me. When they have examples of good supervisors to kind of verify it, they don't look like me. And I'm thinking, first of all, I was surprised that they had us at all as supervisors. And so, then, of course, you realize the reason, so they can show you the bad examples. See, there's value. We have value. So, there was one particular slide that said, hey, employee A and employee B are friends at work and they're friends outside of work. And they use the N word at the job, whether they're on break or not, something like that. That, and, and then the question was, is that harassment? I immediate copied and pasted that and gave it to my supervisors and gave it to HR, and I said, remove this slide. This is supposed to be anti-harassment, and you're harassing anybody who takes this class because you're perpetuating the fact that black people have no value? Are you kidding me? And HR went and investigated and says, oh, no, we stand by this. Well, I have subsequently, and I will share with you, to the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. And I had just a verbal conversation with them. They have now asked for that particular slide. And I had to say, wait, timeout, it's more than this one slide. It's the entire course that is perpetuating subliminally, ma- managers that happen to be black are bad, and anybody else is good. And that's why, don't you even think about getting promoted, because we'll use you as an example. And so, this is what the world at City and County of San Francisco is. They are indicative of the entire San Francisco, the entire state of California, the entire nation, and of que- of course, subsequently, the world. I have been subjected to crossing the street and seeing someone who does not speak English, taking the time to roll down the window, can hardly speak English, but say the N word. Call me the N word. And I'm thinking, is that the qualification to be a citizen in your citizenship? So, it's time to reverse this bar of bullying, of abuse, of racism. We've got to stop it. We have value. The next thing we need to do is implement true cultural competency. Let's not call it harassment, let's not call it hostility. If we, in fact, can learn classes, take classes on different cultures. You know, I used to participate in, in the orientation of new employees at, at San Francisco General Hospital, and they stopped that. And what happened is, there would be three of us, and we happened to look the same. And so, we would do an aspect of, say, a mini-cultural competency. And the real goal of it at first was, the examples were, you know, we have a culture that brings their parents in, or brings their family in, or they look down, they don't look you in your eye, or that they have, you know, the garb on that may help you, you know, not help you, but you know, categorize them, you know, because we are human being onslaught with all of these mixed messages. And so, in addition, I added to the examples, the fact that I, I asked them, I said, which one of us seems more fearful, or that you would, actually, not fearful, but who you would approach easiest and, and things like that? So, we got the answers. And then I raised my voice, and I said, and how many of you thought that it was this one? Or, you know, and they're raising their hands kind of scarily. And I said, how many of you just got scared when I raised my voice? And they all raised their hand. And I said, well, I want you to understand, I was not angry. I was not trying to scare you. That's my mom tone, that's how I talk to my kids and people I care about. And when I'm emphatic, emphasizing, they're like, oh. So, I know I touch some lives that when that group went back to the workforce and they interact with black people, they're not going to be scared when they raise their voice or get a little excited, because they know. It's different from what society and TV and everything else is telling them. We're scary. So, here we are in this age that cultural competency means, hey, let's learn about other cultures, 'cause I'm a black, I don't have any culture. So, the game has to change, and I wanted to share with you my experience, and I appreciate you listening and keep sending out your prayers. We will overcome, and it will, will be okay. I'm very hopeful. So, thank you very much for your time.
I was an LVM in San Francisco General for twelve years. And within that twelve years, I kind of felt like the movie Twelve Years a Slave. I did the work, I was very educated, I was very good with the patients, but my management just didn't like me.
You were a nurse, what were you again?
Uh, LVM, a nurse. So, I worked in different departments, different fields, and I even was changed positions as far as what assignment that I got, because, like I said, my supervisor didn't like me. And I got suspended for stupid stuff, for asking a question. I didn't know in this day and age it was, you know, a crime to ask a question that made sense about, you know, a work assignment that you're given. I got wrote up for taking a lunch break. I got wrote up for taking too long to come from the bathroom. It got to the point where I had to actually announce to the whole entire department, I'm going to the bathroom. So, every single solitary thing I did was noted and documented. And during one of my suspensions that I served, I was transferred to a different department. I had no idea. HR didn't notify me, so when I got to my old department, you know, my supervisor happily said, oh, you don't work here anymore. So, then I got to a different department. Same, I'm gonna use George's French shit, a different department. So, you can't even go to anywhere else in the city and get an actual, what they call, fresh start, because it's gonna follow you. It's like your file has been flagged, and they already know you're coming, so they already start with you. I had a supervisor have me write a black history essay during Black History Month. Had nothing to do with my job description whatsoever. And, you know, I complied with it, just to not make waves, but I'm thinking, I'm black every month. Why do I have to write one, this particular one? And that was my trade-off for being allowed to attend a black history luncheon that was at SFGH. I also had the same supervisor tell me, I don't have a friendly-looking face. So, I looked at a dictionary to see what a friendly-looking face looks like. It's not there.
It didn't have your picture?
No, it didn't. Didn't have his either, for that matter. He talked about my hair. I'm ethnic, my hair is, this is my hair, this is my natural hair, this is natural state. It wasn't neat enough for him. So, he told me, I need to make it neater. He talked about my clothing. He talked about everything other than just flat-out called me a nigger. He might as well have did that, working at this place. I've had the prior supervisor tell me I was a mean-spirited person. Didn't, didn't even know me. Just, how can you judge me as being mean-spirited, and you know nothing about me? Told me I was nasty, told me I was condescending. And, and this is because I speak clearly when I give instructions. I enunciate my words, because people, when they don't understand, they do the wrong thing. And as a nurse, when you're assisting patients, you want to make sure that they're doing what it is that you're instructing them to do. So, consequently, I end up, after twelve years of service, being terminated. No, terminated, and for being told that I was insubordinate, unprofessional, and I had behavioral issues.
They didn't use the word uppity even?
No, not uppity.
That's exactly what they were saying?
Not uppity, pretty much so. So, after seventeen months of being out of work, and it's not easy to get work, um, as an LVM, believe it or not, I had an arbitration, and I won my job back. But it wasn't without stipulations. One was I'd take anger management class. The other is that I'm on a so-called last chance agreement. And with that, I'm told that if any complaints of any kind, meaning if I come in and don't have on the right outfit for the right outfit day, I'm terminated. So, it's kind of like they did me, here, dog, I'm gonna throw you a bone. I didn't receive any back pay, any benefits, any, anything. So, I'm starting fresh, with nothing. And the union is not any better, because they didn't help me with the situation. When I was telling them I'm being harassed, and my supervisor's just doing these things, they didn't do anything to help me at all. And it's bad to the point where now, you know, I have a dollar and twenty-nine cents in my bank account. I'm starting off completely fresh with nothing. And my reinstatement date was October twenty-first. I don't start work until this coming Monday. So, that two months, still, no income. They have not added me to payroll yet, as of this day. So, bully in City and County of San Francisco, actually, is spelled black. If you're black, you're definitely gonna be bullied. You will unfortunately not be able to get ahead. Everything that's wrong with City and County has to do with being, you know, black. The perception of us is just bad. And I was told the same thing, 'cause as you see, I talk with my hands. Oh, you're threatening. And I'm like, well, am I doing this to you?
I would too.
Right? I really do. I mean, even the guy in the anger management course that I had to take was like, why are you here? And I'm like, I don't know. According to my supervisor, they said I'm violent, hostile, and angry. And he said, well, why are you violent, hostile, and angry? I said, because my coworkers are telling them they're afraid of me. Well, why? I said, because maybe after showing up to work with a hockey mask and a machete chasing people, that's the reason. I don't know. But this is just, I don't know, it's just sad. And I kind of just don't know what else to say, other than something has to be done, 'cause you can't get any help anywhere, and it's very frustrating. I can't even get a lawyer. I've talked to fifteen, and won't no one take my case, 'cause no one wants to touch on racism. I filed complaints with the ELC. It's still sitting on the desk, and I did two. No, no investigation. And the charges are discrimination for being, you know, black, and I have a disability. So, that's another thing that I found out. If you are ADA in City and County, best believe you're getting ready to be a target. They don't want to accommodate any more workers with disabilities in City and County.